Okay, ready? Are we on?
Yeah, I think we're on.
Should be calling me next.
All right. What should they say?
The thirteenth, sir.
Okay, the planning board meeting, November thirteenth will come to order. Hector Rea.
Hi.
Philip Baker.
Here.
James Downey.
Here.
Daryl McComey.
Here.
Aaron Joyce.
Present.
Bob Hines. Okay. The first matter we'll do is the announcement, comprehensive zoning rewrite. The second public meeting will be Wednesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven P. M. in the Cahill Auditorium. Then we're gonna get down to the November zoning Board of Appeals. Does anybody have any specific questions on them, or do we just do the standard? Any issues? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve, I'm sorry, recommend zoning Board of Appeal petitions as recommended by the...
Zoning administrator.
By the zoning administrator.
So moved.
Zoning administrator, Connor Murphy.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Request for minor modification. I'm gonna jump down to Thomas Fitzgerald. Yeah. Do you want a ball to kick to?
I have your business.
Yeah, you're looking for a new date?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Jack, on behalf of Mr. Tom Fitzgerald, the developer of Seven-Eleven Independence Avenue, he's asking for, we received a staff report today on the requested changes and some outstanding order of conditions, and we're asking for continuance to the next date, which I think is December eleventh.
One issue I just wanna bring up, and I'm gonna ask for it to continue. It's gotten so old, and it's not your fault. I know you're doing everything you can, and we've had our yelling matches, but your client has gotten very old, it's getting very stale, so...
That's fine, the board's fine with that.
Okay. Chair will take a motion to continue the next date, December eleventh.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To be fair, tell Mr. Fitzgerald it has to come to an end.
See him right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Request for ASBILT approval, six ninety-five, seven twenty-seven Granite Street.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I haven't had a chance to complete my review. This is the Granite Plaza Messina project, and they have finally put together an ASBILT plan, and it's gonna take me a little time to just go back and double-check everything.
First of all, you don't have to apologize, you're overloaded with stuff, so I can only imagine what you guys are going through, so no issue.
We're trying, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair will take a motion to continue till, when the department's ready?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Request for extension of time and minor modification, thirty-six Bramblewood Lane.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mrs. Caderas is here, I don't see her counsel with her yet this evening, but there are two very short and sweet requests that Mrs. Caderas has put forward. First, I would like to update the board, myself and Connor and the building inspector have been out to the site quite a few times, I was out there again last Thursday, the wall has been installed per the plans, Mrs. Caderas has put up the fencing that was requested by the Butters, instead of the chain link, she went with the modified wrought iron look. She has imported the loom and was creating the finished grates when I was there on Thursday, and things are looking really good, given the situation. Two things have come up, one, they have put in a request to eliminate some of the plantings that were on the, one of the Butters' properties, which I've expressed to Mrs. Caderas and Mr. Levin that I will not be supporting that request, and then the second request is to give them an extension of time so that they can complete the screenings and planting in the spring. We got down to the wire, and Mrs. Caderas' landscaper was finding what I would describe as sort of subpar stock available to plant, and given the sensitivity of the situation, and sort of winter kinda came quick, we've had some heavy rains and it got very cold, so I am supporting the six-month extension. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I don't know if Mrs. Caderas has anything to add.
Yes, I do have to ask, if there's a fence between Mrs. Ray and the Renaires, and if the wall will be fully screened with trees for my behind neighbor, why is there a need for me to plant trees to the other neighbor who won't be looking at anything?
I think that was part of the decision in the agreement the board gave at that point. I...
There is a fence between...
No, I understand, I understand, and this is just me speaking, so I'm gonna, I don't wanna rehash the whole thing, a decision was made, it was agreed upon, and I think it's time to move forward.
It was agreed between the neighbor and the planning board.
That...
Mr. Chairman, as you said, this should never have come to this.
Okay, but you're right, this was not an agreement between us and the person, this was an order, a condition set by the planning board, and we set that, and we set that condition...
If the wall was visible for the neighbor to be disappointed in the wall, but the wall will be fully screened with trees, what...
Again, I understand your concern, but this was a condition set, and at this point, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, I'm gonna leave it up to, I'd rather just move...
That is my question.
Okay, but it was a condition set by the board at the time, and...
There was a condition that said, not at the meeting, though, it was never mentioned at the meeting, it was only mentioned for Mrs. Ray.
Okay.
This is a condition that was between the neighbor and the planning board.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you right there, I'm gonna make this clear one time and one time only again.
Okay, sir.
This was never an agreement between anybody and the planning board, this was a condition set by the planning board. When you say it's an agreement, you're making it sound like we did some sort of side agreement. I'm not gonna repeat that again, I'm gonna say it again, this was not an agreement made between the planning board and any individual, this was a condition set by the planning board. Please, do not say again it was some sort of agreement we had on the side, I don't, that kinda makes it seem very questionable.
No, sir, my thing is, we were here too many times, taking your time and ours, and this was not mentioned in front of you, that's why I'm saying that. And it hurts us because it's all money coming out of our own pockets, and if there was something to bother the neighbor, yes, I would agree to it.
Any comments?
No, I just, I just wanted to add that there is a section of fencing between these two properties, but that fencing is a private fence that could be removed at any given point. When the planning board stipulates conditions, those things have to be maintained in perpetuity, and the arrangement of the trees will be selected in the field now that the wall is in to see exactly what views, you know, somebody could buy Mrs. Ray's house tomorrow and redo the entire backyard, remove fencing, it is like a, it's probably one or two panels of an old sort of stockade-looking fence that frankly isn't overly desirable.
Who owns that fence?
And in the meantime...
I'm not exactly sure whose property it's on.
Okay, so...
Actually, let me see if it's, hold on.
Mr. Chairman, may I also add that I did have one of the landscapers check behind the fences, and he told me it's all gravel, he cannot plant anything behind the fences, it'll have to be further down.
It's not clear exactly, because the survey was of Mrs. Ray's property, it doesn't have, it only has like the rare, excuse me, of Mrs. Caderas' property, it doesn't have the property line in between the two properties.
The fences could be Mrs. Burke's.
Yeah, that's why I don't know...
Can we, can we find that out?
Yeah.
Because if they're in control of the fence, then we can, we might be able to look at it differently.
You know, and I will do what I can to try to figure that out, but in the absence of surveying that, I don't know if who's gonna start paying for extra surveys and things like that, I, if it has to get to that point, I can't do a field survey.
I guess there's, my, I'm gonna leave it up to the board, obviously, there's questions about who owns the fence, and you mentioned gravel in the back, so maybe we should address that before we go forward on that part of this, and just, you know, you're recommending and you're agreeable to the continuance or the extension of time, I think that's reasonable, but I'm gonna leave it up to the board. Anybody have any comments?
I mean, if there's, there's other circumstances, you know, if it truly is all ledge there, but that's why these particular plantings, they weren't specified in a particular location because at the time, we're like, let's see what the wall looks like, and particular views from the rear yard could be concerning, and that's why we left it a little bit open, so...
Yeah, would it be possible to, just that part of it, continue that portion of it?
Yeah, I mean, they have the, they have the extension, if we, if they do some more field work and we have to have site visits, I've been out there multiple times, we can go out again, if there's a different area of the yard that needs the screening, or his whole yard is ledge and they can't plant the trees, then that's a different situation, that's something that's not in control of Mrs. Caderas.
But yeah, I guess, I just wanna say, when you make statements like, "It's an agreement we have with a side party," it makes the board look like we're having these side agreements, and we don't do that, and that's important to me, that people understand that the board doesn't do those type of things, and this is like the second time somebody has said something like that, and really, it's troubling to me, so, but, I mean, I think if we grant the extension, then give us some time to look at the other facts, if that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, that gives, I mean, there's not gonna be any planting done until, you know...
No, but we need to know.
Right, yep.
And if there's, nothing can be planned behind the fences, we need to know where.
Well, if they can't be behind the fences, then the question...
Because my guy checked it, he had a long metal stick, he checked, and he says, "There's no way I can dig here."
Yeah, well, that, see, that's something...
And that's the finishing of the tennis court.
Yeah, let me finish the statement, I'm sorry, but that's something you can't control, so you can't control it, then it's not gonna fall on your shoulders, you know what I'm saying, if it's something, that something can't be planted that, we're not gonna make you live up to a condition that's not livable, so, give us some time to look at it, though.
Okay. Yeah, with permission from the board, I can, I can meet out in the field, everyone was very focused on the wall, and we had a couple glitches in that, now that that's taken care of, that was the main thing, getting that thing installed before the wintertime because portions of it were dismantled with the bad weather.
Yeah.
They've got the loom in, I don't know if they laid the sod yet, but that's all gonna be nice and stabilized and draining good and all that, so what we can do is reexamine the field conditions, and then if there is an underlying circumstance, then we can bring it back to the board in the spring.
Yeah, my understanding from, I think the board, you've done, the wall came out very good, that's what I was interested, so that's good, so thank you.
Yes, you did.
Thank you. So, chair, do you...
Yeah, if the board's comfortable and wants to vote the extension tonight, that will give me some time to work through the rest of this stuff.
Okay. I'll move for the extension and review by the assistant director.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm still mad about the billboards accusing us of having side agreements, it really troubles me, I gotta, we're gonna stop that behavior. Next matter on the agenda is request for bond reduction, White Hills Definitive Subdivision.
That's two sorries this month, Mr. Chairman.
No, no sorries, no problem at all, no problem at all.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The next matter will be a public hearing of twenty-eight Willard Street.
This is Mr. Henry.
Oh, yeah, is that you?
Mr. Henry.
Let me just read this into the record.
Okay.
Notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of MasterCard chapter forty-eight, section nine eleven, and the Braintree zoning ordinance, chapter one thirty-five, articles five, six, seven, eleven, and twelve, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, November thirteen, two thousand and eighteen, at seven fifteen P. M. in the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider special permit application filed by Nicole and Michael Vickery, property owners of twenty-eight Willard Street, the applicant seeks to construct and/or perform the following: installation of sixteen by twenty-six eight-ground pool with decked around the pool comprised, I'm sorry, comprised of pavers, removal of approximately four hundred and thirty square feet of existing paved driveway, removing approximately fifteen square feet of an existing deck, installation of loom and seed within the disturbed areas. The property is located at twenty-eight Willard Street within the residence speed zoning district, adjacent to the open space service district, subject to required thirty-foot buffer zone, in which a portion of the above activities are proposed, said partial identified in assessment plan thirty twenty-six, part thirty-four, and is comprised of eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight square feet in the lot area. Thank you.
Okay.
No, 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 you have to tell us what you're doing.
I'm just putting a hole in. Basically, there's some law with the Open Space Act beside me, but my garage is already in that spot and it's pre-existent, and I just need like one foot to go encroaching that area, and instead of encroaching that area, what I'm doing is I'm taking out some asphalt, and I'm gonna put some loom, you know, kinda similar what you do with wetlands, you know, to put back, get rid of some asphalt, put some grass in, you know, and then there's a fence going in, I designed it so it didn't encroach in that area as much as I could, but we couldn't get close to the house because, you know, it's a pool, you know, can't get too close to the house, so...
All right, thank you, hold on, what I do now is I ask questions of the public.
Okay.
Okay, so if anybody wishes to come forward and speak, we got to this proposal, anybody wish to speak against this proposal, okay, seeing nobody, what I'm gonna do is open it up to the board. Member Baker?
So how many, how much square footage actually in the buffer zone, is it, is it much, or is it... It's like one foot by twenty-eight. Okay. For the apron, and I'm getting rid of... Are you removing the garage, or is that staying? Garage is staying. Staying, okay. If you look at the plan, that you could see where the garage is, it's all laid on on the plan, how much, I'm getting rid of a lot more than I'm putting in.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, maybe just to answer some questions that everyone has.
Yep.
So, the Eldridge School, I think that was the former school there, that was rezoned to OSC, I wanna say late eighties, I think, early nineties, Mr. Vickery's garage pre-existed that zone being rezoned, so the thirty-foot buffer, as his garage exists today, doesn't have any, because it's pre, you know, non-conforming, it doesn't affect it, but the fact that he wants to put the pool in the front yard did require him to get a special permit from the thirty-foot setback, so the structure of the pool, he's actually gotten outside, I think you may remember, we had Kippenhans recently, same situation, so the pool shifted a little, but it can't get too close to the house, so now, what's really in the thirty-foot buffer is the decking around the pool, however, he has agreed to take up some pavement, he's gonna keep some of it, and he's gonna loom and seed it, so our recommendation was for approval, and we gave you some draft conditions to look at it tonight.
No more questions?
Daryl McComey, any questions, comments?
Yeah. Did you have to go to the zoning board of appeals for any relief?
I already did.
Okay, what was that relief, Christine?
It was for the front yard setback.
The setback, right.
And, I believe, lot coverage, and that actually is something I missed to include as a condition, and I'd recommend that be added, as well as another one that I'll explain in just a few minutes.
Okay. I'm very familiar with that area because I went to Eldridge, so it's, you know, your lot is very tight there, and when you put your fence up, how's that gonna look relative to your neighbor, is there a fence there now? I don't remember.
No.
There's no fence, so you're gonna put the fence up for the pool?
Yes.
Okay, it's gonna go all the way around, all right, and, okay, and is he improving his, since he's taking up pavement, is he improving open space, or is that kind of just a wash?
It's minimal, it's a minimal impact, it's, I wouldn't say it's exactly...
The billboard, like, continue.
Improving it, but it's very minimal.
Okay, and just like our other, the other application we had, is any part of the pool in the buffer?
No.
Okay, so that's all out, so it's only the decking and the walkways?
And the fencing.
And the fencing?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So that, that's helpful, because we've had other ones like that, I'm sure you may or may not know, okay, well, like I said, it's kind of a tight area, but you've designed it and everything else seems to fit, then, okay, I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Member Downey?
I have nothing.
Member Joyce?
Nope.
Okay, I don't have anything either. Nobody has any comments? I'd like to set up, I put into the record the, all the correspondence, was there any correspondence? There was correspondence on this one?
Yes, the list forgot to get printed.
What?
The list is still in my computer, it didn't get printed.
You have it, so, the chair will take a motion to approve the correspondence, got to this matter?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before you go on to the next motion, I would ask that two other conditions be added, one is the variance that you already obtained, we just make reference to it, and then the other is the stormwater divisions letter came in after I had written the conditions, and I think you, did you get a copy of that?
Yeah, it's about how to drain the pool.
Yeah, it tells them how to backwash and things like that, so I'd like to reference that, so it would be condition thirty-three and thirty-four.
Okay, right now, I understand the motion, motion was made to approve all the correspondence, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, chair will take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair will take a motion. Pool conditions, including thirty-three and thirty-four?
Mr. Chairman, the motion for a special permit and site plan review, file number eighteen dash seventeen, by Mr. Michael and Nicole Vickery, as the applicant be approved, subject to the conditions discussed at this meeting, and with the addition of conditions thirty-three and thirty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next matter on the agenda is sixteen West Street, file number eighteen dash nineteen. Thank you, I'll leave this into the record, if you come forward. Notice given by the planning board of the provisions of MasterCard chapter forty-eight, section nine eleven, and the Braintree zoning ordinance, chapter one thirty-five, articles five, six, seven, eight, eleven, and fourteen, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, November thirteen, two thousand and eighteen, at seven fifteen P. M. in the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider an application for use one thirty-five dash six oh one special permit, and site plan review of conversion of two-family dwelling from Hank's, owner-applicant. The applicant proposes to convert the existing single-family structure to two-family dwelling as outlined in the application, along with the associated parking access improvements. The property is located sixteen West Street, is owned residence being identified in assessment plan twenty twenty-nine, as part four, having an area of nine thousand five hundred and ninety-four square feet. Thank you, you may go forward.
Hey, good evening, planning board, my name is Hank, owns the West Street, and I propose to change the use of a single-family to two-family home, and the description of the change is the unit number one, we propose to use the dining room and the family room diverted to a two-bedroom for the unit one, and the kitchen and the bath, existing, for unit one, and the sunroom is for a living room for unit one, and the unit two, we propose to use the, right now, the bathroom and, and sunroom for the kitchen, and the living room, and half-bath, and the second floor is to have three-bedroom and a full-bath though, existing, and stay as it, have no change. The second unit, propose to have a parking, we have four-parking on, existing right now, and we'd like to move the two-parking out to the right-hand side, because it's, the two-parking is so close to the entrance of the unit one, it's, I feel like unsafe, we don't have, I don't wanna have any incident into it. We have, we have a walk-through with the planning department, and planning make a couple good recommendations. First, we want to remove the tree, but the planning recommend to keep the tree, because the tree has some texture to the town, to the street, and we ship the parking over a bit, I think it's right next to the tree, probably three feet off that existing planning. And I have this, this picture here to show is the parking, existing parking, and the door, the entry door, is right onto, you know, it's like two feet away from it.
Yeah.
So, it's also, we, when we move the parking to, far to the right-hand side, it's also give you, give us more view to the corner of the road, because it's so close to the corner, so if you go further on, you'd be more view for the car approaching to the street. That's all.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sir. Let me just ask some questions, if anybody wants to, wants you to come speak for or against this project, I should come forward, identify yourself, please, if you can sit down and let, let her speak.
Hi.
Want you, the applicant, you can, you can sit down, you can sit down.
Hi, my name's Robin Houston Bean, this is my sister Marcy, we, our family owns five forty-one Washington Street, which is the insurance agency, real estate agency that is at five forty-one Washington Street, but backs up to the property. Before we got the notice, we had sent the applicant a certified letter on October eighteenth, concerned with the fence in the back that's falling apart and falling over, and the dead tree that's towards the back of the property, I know he bought the property, I think it was back in January, and nothing has been done to remedy any of that, the house is sitting there with a smashed window in the front, the front door, I'm just concerned, wanting to make sure that there are gonna be improvements and not let the back deteriorate more, my husband had to go and put a zip tie up to hold the fence up so it doesn't fall on the cars that are parked in our parking lot, I have copy, copies of the certified letter with pictures that I sent out, and the backyard of that property floods, and some of it floods into our parking lot, I'm concerned if there's pavement, I wasn't sure how the parking is gonna be changed, if the back is more tar or anything back there, that it's gonna cause more flooding to our property, and I just wanna make sure that that doesn't happen, and if it does happen, if we have any, you know, ramifications for that.
See what the drainage system is?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you see the drainage? So what's the department's position on this?
Mr. Chairman, the first we're hearing of any Butters complaining about the conditions, the existing conditions at sixteen West Street, I have walked the site, Mr. Dung, and we've talked about upgrading the landscaping, upgrading the property itself, and certain edges of the property, he has compost piled up, there's trash, and there's other, there is fencing that does need to be repaired, which we are intending to have him do, as part of the order conditions that would be associated with the project.
And with regards to, they mentioned the flooding, they mentioned the flooding with regards to any potential further runoff onto their property?
I have not interviewed that yet, no.
All right, so maybe we should look into that, all right. Member Baker, any questions, comments?
Just in the site plan, I just want it updated to show the new egresses you're installing, I think one in the rear, we don't have the landing showing, going out to the backyard, I don't know if you wanna take any measures to separate unit one and unit two, any outdoor space, any fencing or anything, or is it gonna be a common, a common outdoor space?
It's just a common outdoor space, and I'm sorry for, I didn't get your letter, but the whole intent to this project... but the whole intent to this project, I would improve, the fence would be a new fence, and would be improved in general, to let you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get your, your mail, but that's, I will do so. And.
Any questions?
No.
That's it? That's all?
Yeah. Yeah.
Not much there. Mr. Reed, any questions?
No, sir.
I'm coming, any questions?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dung, how long have you owned this property?
Almost a year.
One year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Reason I delayed, because I have a heart attack, and I had to push off with it, and so I getting better now, time to, I want to get it done.
Okay, well, I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
We don't want this project to give us a heart attack either, so.
Yeah, I bought the house.
All right, that's a bad joke. Okay, so, no, I was just reading that Planning Board, on July thirteenth ninety-nine, approved a special permit for use to convert into a two-family apartment, so you're essentially piggybacking on that decision?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if this project goes through, are you planning on living here and renting out the other unit, or are you just going to be a landlord?
I, I plan to downsize, I live in Granite Street right now, as a big house, and because my family, my wife, my son, use it, a public transportation, so that's, that's the plan. We want to use that for the T. Yeah, we live there.
Okay, so you're not going to live here, then?
We live there, yes.
I'm sorry, I just want to, you're not going to live here once it's rehabilitated?
I will live there.
Oh, you will live there?
Yes.
Okay, and, and just your family is going to live there, on the second unit as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Me and my son, yeah.
All right, so you have incentive?
Yes.
To do that, okay. And the only thing I'd, the only other thing I'd mention is, you know, when you do these projects, I always think that they're an opportunity to make, to make them really nice projects.
Yes.
And as you heard from some of your neighbors, and I'm looking at your plan here, and I'm sure as you work with Mr. Murphy, from the staff, it would be nice to see, I looked at some of the pictures, you know, hopefully you're going to clean up the fence, I'd like to, you know, the plan for your plantings and all that.
Yes.
I would just suggest that you take some time and think, how can I make this really look nice?
Yes.
Okay, because your family's going to live there?
Yes.
And you're going to go to all this expense, and, you know, here in town, whenever we have these, like I said?
Yes.
It's an opportunity to make things look good.
Yes.
And that's, you know, you're in a visible corner there.
Yes.
So, with, you know, commercial neighbors as well, so I just mentioned that corner. I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
If there are any questions or comments?
Just, just like good fences make good neighbors, good conditions make for good neighbors as well, so I want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing, that there's a dying mature tree in the front yard?
Yes.
Okay.
An apple tree located just front of the yard, which is completely separate from what they are talking about.
Okay, that's what I want to clarify, if we're talking about the same tree, first of all.
Another tree? Okay, you have another tree, so there's another tree. I don't want you to say too much, because you're up there, so.
Okay, because he's agreed to replace one dying tree, and I just want to be clear, because if that were the case, then they would be probably satisfied with that, so it looks like there's going to, the plan was to have a Japanese maple in the rear yard? Connor? Sorry.
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
The, the plan is to replace the one dying tree with the Japanese maple?
Correct, and if he removes another tree, he would be required to plant another one as well, most likely in the same location.
He'd have to take down both dying trees, is that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the fence was their other thing they wanted to have, have fixed, and the third was the flooding, and how, how would we go about addressing that?
Can you repeat that?
In regards?
Flooding issue that they raised, is there anything we can, I know the chairman raised that.
If I may, just quickly chime in, I mean, that area, it looks fairly level, and it looks like actually, if you look at the topography, that there's kind of a low point in, in Mr. Dung's backyard, and the people on the corner, the nail salon, and they're completely paved, the ladies that are here tonight are completely paved, so he's probably taking on the water from his butters, because it's kind of only grass in the area. Raising it's just going to re-divert things. I would probably leave it alone, to be honest. I, I just don't know what, you know, short of looking at beyond just his backyard, and everybody getting together and figuring out how to solve it, I don't think, if you raise the grade in his yard, you're just going to divert it onto his neighbors. But looking at this, I see that round, sort of, the one-ten contour in the backyard, and it appears to be a low point, because we see the one-twelve on the butter, and then I'm not exactly sure about these ladies, the slope, but I know that they're pretty much all paved, unless I'm, I'm speaking out of, out of tune.
Is the, let me just ask the applicant first, have you noticed that, that when it rains, there's a lot of flooding back there?
Honestly, it's why, if, if, right now, the rain, I was considering the rain getting to my, my basement, I did take a look at this, my backyard, it seemed like a low point, and it's all grass. And, and, and I think the planning board and I, we walked around, was a couple of good recommendations he did, so we was have the trash can, like, out this way, and we moved the trash can to contain to the center of property, and we did take a, what, fifteen, twenty-minute walk-through, and he just concerned about the button, the neighbor property. That's why he recommended me to, you know, plant some hash around the property, and I show on the plan, to keep the property is, you know, it's, it's contained, and not to bother the, the neighbor. Regarding the fence, I honestly, I, I don't know who owned the fence, but now you say it's my fence, then I maybe look back to the map of the survey, and the whole intent is I want to make it beautiful, nice, and if I have to, you know, if you want a better fence, and you want to cheap, cheap in the money, and want to make a beautiful fence, and we into it, if not, I just fix my, my fence. We're, we're not going to leave the fence with that condition now, okay? Yeah.
With the flooding issue, I think we were concerned that, we want to make sure that backyard didn't get paved, because that will cause a huge disaster in that area, and we weren't sure from, you know, the notice that we got, if it was a two-family in the backyard. I think if it stays grass, he'll continue to flood, and we will, because we are all a kind of a low point there, but if there was changes, I didn't want more to be diverted our way.
To, to let, you know, we, we're not disturb any elevation or any thing in the backyard.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Connor just pulled up the topo, and that puddle is basically the drainage system for this little neighborhood, so everybody's higher.
It's fair to say, concern was, it was going to be paved, and stock.
Yeah. There is a basketball court back there, though. If, if that was removed, it would help.
Yeah.
That's also, is a low point, it's, it's, yeah.
Okay, I have nothing else.
Yeah, I'll just follow up on some of the comments regarding drainage. For a project of this size magnitude permitting, and a question, I guess, to Connor, to staff, what is the requirements for stormwater management on something like this, not really?
Today, nothing.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure if all the members are aware, but we do have a new stormwater division, and they're sort of working through their regulations now, and I think that this is something that they're going to be looking at, these sort of individual projects in neighborhoods that, you know, one by one, don't really have an impact, but if you had a whole neighborhood that was changing things, adding driveways and things like that, and not really paying attention to butters and things like that, I mean, you change something by just as much as six inches, and you could, you could negatively impact other people. So, today, this property is exempt from the stormwater management regulations that we follow for all the other larger projects and bigger sites, but I believe that there will be a local ordinance, probably in the next, I would say, six months, that is going to target these sort of smaller projects that don't really, things like infiltrating the roof, and trying to introduce some type of water quality, are some of the things that they've been talking about.
Okay, so as a follow-up along the same lines, condition, proposed, or draft condition four talks about the proposed curb cut shall be removed. I just wanted to understand the final proposed configuration for cars on the parking lot. The plan that we have shows a proposed two-car driveway across from Beverly Court, then it also shows an existing four-car driveway just south, closer to Washington Street. So is that what's proposed, those two parking areas, or as part of the conditions, we're suggesting to only have the one parking area?
So, when we received the application, it had the proposed two-car driveway on the left-hand portion of the site, that would be a new curb cut, and we have suggested that the applicant use the existing driveway, which he has labeled as four cars. He does have the opportunity to expand it, if he chooses to, but we have asked that be removed, and essentially just have all parking be located in the existing spot.
And was that, was that agreeable, was that agreeable to you, to not have the second driveway?
I, I would like to have, because I concerned safety, because the door is, can I, can I approach this, this picture probably? Because the two-car was on this side, is.
It's hard for us to see that.
May I?
Do you have that in the packet?
No.
I can't see it, can anyone else?
I can't see it.
No.
Do you have any other copies of this?
No, but I, I think.
This one? Do they want to keep it?
So the exist, that right there is a picture of the existing driveway, which looks to be able to fit four cars, and the applicant would like to install an additional driveway over here, that would?
No, we want to move the two existing on this side to this side, because it's the car so close to the entry.
So would you be making that driveway smaller, or would you maintain it at the same size, and then just add an additional driveway?
We just use half of it, that's, at, yeah, so, so away from the house.
So, so you want to make the existing driveway smaller?
Yes.
To allow for two cars only?
Yes.
And then you want to use, on the other side of the house, with two other cars?
Correct.
So, that's what he says, make that one smaller here.
I think in, you know, in considering how it will look from the neighborhood, having, you know, such a wide amount of driveway across, just, I mean, it's a two-family house, but they could clearly have space to have the cars parked in that existing driveway. I would, I'd be in favor of staying with the staff's recommendations of maintaining the existing driveway. The other positive thing with maintaining the existing driveway, which is large enough for four cars, is you're not adding additional impervious area driveway to a site that is having, you know, potentially runoff in the backyard. Would there be any opportunity to remove a portion of the asphalt court in the back?
We see, look, didn't see an effect for anything, because it's a low point, if the water is, will be contained right there, it didn't really do anything, but the, the, the whole reason to move the, the parking to another side, because it's a safety concern, is the door, if you look at that picture, image there, is the car will park, it's like, if it be, be exactly the parts, it'd be two, three feet away from the entry door.
Could be the entry door.
And what, what we want to do, would take the two existing part on, on that side, move to another side, so we have opened up the entry door for, for safety purposes.
The, the entry door is on the right-hand side, that, that's a door to a bedroom, right in front of you, where the, where the parking is existing, that's a bedroom door.
That.
That's not an, that wouldn't be an entry door, your entry door would be through the mudroom.
We have two entry doors, what, that one, entry door for unit one, another one, unit door for, for unit two.
Unless you're changing it. That'd be living. Not that close.
All right, um.
Yeah, we, I did consider that, he's, the recommendation, and go over with my engineer, and we, we look into make that thing an angle, so we can use that, hold this side, which we ship the thing, but it didn't work out, because it's not enough room for the car to, it's also, when you want to park the last car in here, you have to make a, a, a good swing into that, so it's still right, right in front door. That's, that's the whole reason why we want to propose that.
Did we have, just to follow up on the stormwater drainage, was there any review from the stormwater group, new department, on this?
We received correspondence from the engineering department, they represent DPW Stormwater and Engineering, they said stormwater has no comments, but they will track the impervious surface.
Okay. I guess if, two comments follow up on that, I guess if the board was to move forward with allowing two curb cuts and two driveways for this particular parcel, I would recommend that the asphalt court in the back is removed, so that there isn't a increase of impervious area on the site. And to follow up on the fence, did you say the fence in the rear is your fence, or you're not sure if it's your fence? The stockade fence that you're talking about back there?
Honestly, I didn't take a good look at this, see who fences it, but, you know, I, I believe, if you say it's my fence, I will address that, but the whole intent of this project here, I want to make that area look good, you know, that's all, we planted a tree and stuff like that, and I, after this, I can give you my cell phone number, and you can contact me direct, and we neighbor.
Yeah, the only comment, it looks like that the fence that's out there is clearly on the butters' land, so if you do reconstruct it, you'll have to recon, and it's your fence, you'll have to reconstruct it closer to your property, so right now, it is not on your property, so that was the question, I guess. I haven't seen it visually, so I'm not sure to, you know, to see what, whose fence it looks like it is, but it's, it's clearly on their property, so you just want to make sure when you rebuild it?
Yes.
That you get it on to your property, so.
Chairman, if I can follow up with Member Joyce's question, if the second driveway were to be allowed, I think, I'm not sure if the conditions include no parking on the street. I think we should, if there's going to be two driveways and two vehicles parked in each driveway, then there shouldn't be any reason for any of the residents in that dwelling to be parking on the street. And I'd suggest that be considered.
The other thing too, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that we had sort of discussed is, as moving forward, and we're putting out these new ordinances, now front yard parking is not going to be allowed, and this, we have one existing four-car driveway that's in the front yard, and now he's proposing a second driveway that's in the front yard, and if the board was inclined to entertain anything, just looking at this, I would put forward a suggestion of two, one-car width driveways that are, that are too deep, and that he can get that in to the side of the house, as far away from West Street, and not be in the front yard, it's just to, to add something that we're really trying to get away from at this point, is, is a little sort of counterproductive, we're trying to remove, remove cars parking in the front yard.
I was going to bring that up too.
Yeah.
So the, the potential amendment would be to have the existing four-car driveway narrowed, so it's just too deep, and then a new one in the location where they're showing it, and instead of it being twenty feet wide, it would be ten feet wide and two cars deep?
That would be my, yeah, would need to be laid out and engineered, because I think we're maxing the curb cut with two in total, and, and if you think about the two-family conversion, and sort of what it's about, it's to try to use what you have and reconfigure it, and the reality is, is two separate driveways on a single-family, it, it's not overly common, you, you do see that in a multi, but we're trying to sort of. You do see that in a multi, but we're trying to sort of integrate these while do what you need to do inside, but it kind of still looks, smells, and acts like a single family to try to sort of minimize the visual impact when you start to see multiple driveways, different cars, people sort of parking separately. I think, I think having, you know, a too-wide, too-deep driveway is very common even for a single family, but to have that plus another one that's only too wide, now you're like, you're almost like in a condo conversion.
I just look at it as, I don't see keeping that driveway at that size. You know, I can't see adding another driveway and then letting you keep that driveway at that size.
No, I...
That has to be narrowed and a curb, I don't know if you can even put in a curb, get a curb in there to make it a one-car width driveway.
I think I kind of like Melissa's suggestion too, but if we can do that, because the whole intent, we would like to have the door open right to the sidewalk.
But that means you have to dig up half that driveway?
Yes.
And make it a...
Not a problem.
Put grass and plants in there.
That's...
It cannot be used?
No.
For anything?
Yeah, that could be a walkway, it's straight out.
I just don't see adding another driveway and keeping that one so wide. That troubles me.
I don't need it. I would make that probably, I'd do a sidewalk for walking to the house.
Not even sidewalk, I mean, you could have the sidewalk coming from the driveway, but that whole length cannot be a sidewalk.
What I mean, may I mean, do some decoration for myself.
I think you need grass there.
Grass?
Spread it over, spread the front lawn over to halfway through that driveway, so that way, that half that driveway is lawn.
Okay.
And not pavement.
That's fine, yes.
Here's the thing.
Yeah, I think...
Otherwise, otherwise we're going to have two driveways, one for four cars and one for two, and that...
I think that going to look better too, because was, you know, it's a square and cover the whole entire front, it probably don't look good.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, do I think that we should get a revised plan to put what the board wants?
Yeah.
So...
Show where the new fencing is going to be, give him some, a chance to, we're looking at the plot plan and like, there's two trees that are behind 529, and one is questionable that's even on his property. The roots are potentially on 529, so look at that in the field, evaluate that. There's another tree that's on his side of the fence, but really on the insurance property. Is that going to stay? Is that going to go? Is it going to be impacted by relocating the fence? So all of those things in total, and also with the new driveway locations, and then the additional grass recommended by the board members. I think that would be important to kind of just nail that down so that Mr. Gong knows what to do.
Yeah. So want to put this matter over and get more details? I think we're going to have to. Chair, will you take the motion?
So are we making a motion to?
Identify exactly the changes that will occur?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the special permit in site plan review for 16 West Street, file number 18-19. The motion is to continue the request until such time as additional information can be obtained.
Is there a, would be the next day?
The next meeting? Do we have a date for that?
December 11th, is it?
Until December 9th?
December 11th. For one time I was right. December 11th.
Oh, I should listen to you more often. Until December 11th?
Okay, is there a, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So what we need is a more definitive plan as to how the driveway is going to look, what fence is going to be, and what trees are going to be rebuilt, all right? And I think once you do that, and we satisfy the neighborhood feeling, it works for the neighborhood, we can go forward. So I'd ask you to work with Jeremy, with Connor, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And come up with those plans.
So I have to get back here again?
Yes. You do, sir. Thank you, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, the next matter on the agenda is 115 Messina Drive. Do you have the Messina Drive file? All right, I'm going to read the added to the record, please. Okay. Notice is given by the planning board under provisions matched in law chapter 48, section 911, and the Braintree zoning bylaw chapter 135, articles 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 12, and 14. The public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday November 13, 2018, at 7:15 PM in the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider watershed special permit 135 through 609 and site plan review application from the applicant, Boston Air Systems, who is proposing to construct a one-floor addition to the rear of the existing building that is 1,380 square feet, and one second-floor addition over the front portion of the building that is 1,976 square feet, to expand the office and storage areas of the building used for the light manufacturing use, along with the associated landscape and parking drainage improvements. The property is located, is 53,760 square feet, has an address on 115 Messina Drive, has its own commercial water center, has its own financial system, Plan 1059, is part 5L.
Hello. My name is Michael Joyce with Joyce Consulting Group, the civil engineers for the project. With me is the applicant Jay Blazo of Boston Air Systems. They have their warehouse and office at 115 Messina Drive. The existing building houses office space and some manufacturing floor space where they manufacture HVAC ductwork. They have approximately 15 people in the office or on the floor producing material, and approximately 100 people in the field installing the material in surrounding cities, particularly in Boston. The applicant's before you tonight to propose a second-story addition above the first floor of the bumpout in the front of the existing building. The existing building is approximately 15,000 square feet on a 54,000 square foot rectangular lot. The majority of the lot consists of impervious area, rooftop, paving, and packed gravel, the exception of a landscaped front yard. So the applicant's proposing a second-story addition in order to put office space in that area. Right now, there's some office space within the manufacturing floor. They'd like to open that up to provide some more space between the existing equipment. The site currently is accessed from the east side. That's a parking lot with still some shipping containers, and then three non-conforming bubble sheds in the rear. Another portion of this project would be to remove those bubble sheds and the shipping containers, and construct a warehouse at the rear of the building. This warehouse would serve to, for storage for existing tin that they use, they typically go through quite a bit of tin. Jay can give you the numbers on that later if you are interested. So basically, it's an area to store tin that's going to be used and things that have been manufactured but are waiting to go shipped out on the next day or two's shipping cycle. So basically, what we're proposing to do is the second-floor addition in the warehouse in the rear. We're also proposing parking improvements. Right now, there's no striping, and cars kind of park at their own will, which is very inefficient. So we're proposing to stripe the lot, bring up the handicap spaces to be ADA compliant. In addition to that, we are proposing some stormwater improvements. Overall, the project reduces the amount of impervious area. However, being in the watershed district, we're aware that stormwater improvements are appreciated. So what we're proposing are 10 subsurface infiltration units. Those proposed addition area will be tied to that, as well as one of the existing catch basins will be replaced with a storm scepter inlet to provide oil and grit separation. That system will overflow to an existing stormwater drain that runs through the property. And that's really the extent of the project. We'd like to open up to any questions.
Well, right now, obviously nobody in the public, so I'm going to ask the board, if the board has any questions at this point?
The rear warehouse, just a one-story open facility?
Originally, it was, we had it quite tall, about 30 feet. After speaking, talking to zoning and the planning department, we dropped it down to match the existing roof line, which is about 18 feet. So it's an 18-foot warehouse, there'll be, after we thought about the 30-foot one, it didn't really make much sense, because you're not going to be able to access that top 10 of feet of space anyway, so it's going to be two-tiered inside, so it'll be like a mezzanine level to store some upper storage space.
And did you already go to ZBA, or did you already?
We did go to ZBA the last hearing and received approval.
Great. I see your candoring, you know, this is not going to be columns or anything on the...
There will be columns on either end, brick, so the facade's brick. Facade is brick to match the existing, then there's going to be a column on either side up front and one on the midpoint, I believe.
To pick up that end that's eight feet out?
Exactly.
Okay. No further questions this time?
Mr. Speaker, for the board questions. Hector, Arena, any questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
Might I have this high?
No, sir. Come.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I recall from our last meeting, you're purchasing this site from Messina Companies, is that correct?
No, our client, this is our first time here. So our client had purchased the building in 2007, and they've been there since. They do have, I didn't mention the rear, there is a packed gravel area that is leased out to United Rentals for parking.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right.
I was thinking of the other project.
Yeah, there's a lot going on in Messina Drive.
Yeah, well, we got... Okay, I got it right here, sorry. Oh, that's right, okay. So what obviously caught my eye was the three existing unauthorized storage tents. So can you just explain what that was about? That wasn't you per se, or was it another tenant, or?
No.
It was you? Okay, so what happened?
We put one up, and then, like, story, we were on the other side of Braintree before, we had like 15 employees, and then we just started growing and growing and growing, and then we got a couple more of those tents and put them in there. That's why, they're really not good for us either, because they leak, and they're more of a, you know, with the wind and everything else like today, watering them, and we store like coils of metal in there, like 10,000-pound coils of metal, they're very expensive, and trying to top over the tents too, and just kind of got out of hand, you know?
You know, we don't like that kind of stuff, so I'm just going to be honest with you. And I appreciate your candor, but it's still not good. Yeah. Well, it's not good.
That's why I want to...
Okay.
I've already expressed that to Mr. Blazo.
Okay.
I know the board's going to again, but he's, I think he's trying to do it right.
Yeah, and the reason for that, sir, is we have so many people, every meeting, that come in, and they've already done the work, or they've already done something, and then they have, they got caught, or whatever, and it's just so much easier coming in. And honestly, it's, you know, also working with the developers and the tenants, we want to make sure, you know, people are safe and things are done correctly here. So I don't want to beat it, but I don't like to see it, so I'm sure the staff has already mentioned that. So I'll be the bad person on the bad cop tonight on that. Okay, so, moving forward, we're going to do everything correctly and by the book, I assume?
That's the goal, yep.
Okay. All right, and we don't have our stormwater person. Were there any issues with stormwater, Melissa?
There are, Mr. McCamey, if I may, through the chair. I've spoken to Mr. Joyce and myself and the stormwater division, and Mr. Joyce are going to sit down. We wanted to get any other feedback that might be from the board members regarding the site and the property. That way, they can kind of do one full flush in the revisions and sort of look at the site as a whole. I have a lot of suggestions and recommendations for the particular property. May I offer them at this time, Mr. Chairman? So the site is kind of segmented a little bit, there's Mr. Blazo and sort of what he's doing, and then we'll refer to sort of this back area that he's leasing out to somebody else. But they've sort of taken the improvements and only focused on their portion that they're using, and I will be discussing with Mr. Joyce sort of that back area as well, and what improvements can be made to that. The reality is it's compacted gravel, and it's essentially just a sedimentation area, and an area that has the potential to contribute quite a bit of sediment. This sort of a cross-country drainage system that runs through this property to the property to the back, and then hooks in with some of the other projects that we've done on Roxanne Park, and then sort of goes down and crosses over Pond Street. So not trying to get too crazy here, but try to maybe do some swales or some things to try to help with the water quality before it's moved further down the system will be some of the things that will, that I will be discussing with them. And those comments also came up from the stormwater division as well. So things like that, the plan needs some minor revisions and other aspect. I didn't realize there was actually even a second floor in the storage area, that's news to me this evening, so we'll need to look at that potentially, and look at the parking calculations and how those are impacted or not impacted, and really just trying to, Mr. Blazo has a very successful business and he's growing, but as people grow, we need to make sure that the site that they're on still serves their needs. The few times that I have visited the property, it's busy, there's a lot going on over there. So we want to make sure that the loading is clear, that the parking is clear and accessible, and that people can park a vehicle and walk in and out of the building safely, and that areas that are for storage are dedicated for storage, and that sort of the site as part of this hopefully can get organized and cleaned up a little bit, and I think that's his goal as well. I mean, I've been inside the building, his businesses, he's becoming more successful, but he, it's very, very, very congested and very tight. So while the expansion is going to help clear up the inside, we want to make sure that the outside is also managed and appropriately redesigned as well, as he continues to grow.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I may, we're happy to work with planning in order to improve the proposed plan, so we've seen the comments, and we're confident that we can address them.
Okay, well, you're going to have to work with planning, otherwise we're not going to pass it.
Always do, right?
Yeah, no, I, you know, I'm just going to speak for myself, but this board has been very clear about things, particularly when people do things that they're not allowed to do, and so you got off to a wrong foot start. I hope you improve from here. Again, not to beat it, but when I read, as everybody on the board has read, several years ago have passed, the owner would like to pursue something legal and more appropriate, those are kind of red flags. However, when the staff visited the property, very congested, disorganized, and in need of a lot of cleanup and improvement, that speak volumes. So again, since I'm playing the bad cop tonight, I'm going to strongly suggest that you listen intently to what the staff has to say. Do everything, not just simply good, but great. For example, drainage comes to mind when I look at this landscaping plan, you know, we're going to hold your feet to the fire. Make sure you do it correctly. And so, as I said, I hope from, you know, today forward, or whatever, you know, please get your act together, and, you know, listen to what the staff has to say, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. No?
I have no questions.
That's exhilarating. I think we should, you know, in your recommendation, you indicated continuing this matter so you can work with them?
Yes, please, Mr. Chairman.
I think based on the department's recommendation, I probably, that's the best alternative at this point. So Chair, will you take a motion, continue to the next meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if everything's, I'm sorry, Mr. Joyce, if everything's in order, I'll have the draft conditions as well.
Okay. The next matter on the agenda is Commerce Drive, file eighteen dash sixteen. Thank you. Glad you could join us. Oh, it's continued public hearing? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
For the record, Frank Marinelli, I'm pleased to appear this evening on behalf of the Mar Companies. We had the public hearing with the board on October ninth, and with me again this evening is our development team. I want to introduce to the board Dan Mar, the third. Dan is the principal and owner of the Mar Companies. Mar Companies, by way of background, have been in business for one hundred and twenty years, six generations. They have a terrific legacy of providing services and construction rigging to the regional construction industry. Great legacy for being a, for community philanthropy. And I think it's exciting for Braintree to welcome the Mar Companies to Commerce Drive and to this property, a two oh one Commerce Drive. The property, as the board knows, is about ten point six acres. It's commercially zoned, so what we're proposing to do is a use by right. It's a forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty square foot contractors, warehouse, contractors yard. And we went through it the last time. We had a forty-one thousand square foot building. We bumped it out a bit to provide some accessory office for the use. And so the building footprint on the revised plans is forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty square feet on ten point six acres. In addition to Dan Mar, Dave Hughes, who's the vice president of real estate for the Mar Companies, is here. Also, our engineering team, Bill Hoeyman and Carlos Sculte of CEC Engineering are here. So we are happy to answer any questions that the board has. It is a use by right. Carlos has worked on all of the stormwater, the drainage, which was presented the last time in detail. He's also worked with the town's stormwater division. The board has received from the departments what we believe are all favorable recommendations. Some of the comments have been already included in the draft conditions. And we're cognizant of the fact that Ms. Stickney was away and, you know, we had a holiday yesterday. So I think like the board, we just received the draft conditions understandably at about four thirty today, but we have gone through them and we're prepared to address them. Out of sixty-three proposed conditions, I think that we'd like to address probably just five. And again, it's a use by right. Generally, under all of the case law, as the chairman knows, a use by right is approved with or without reasonable conditions. And, you know, we're accepting of the large majority of the conditions, but we do need to discuss five of the conditions, and I'm happy to do that now if the board wants. So if the board would go first to condition number twenty-one. Condition number twenty-one and also the final condition, which was, I think Christine, was a separate document with two conditions, really talked about the installation of a seven hundred foot pipe, which is based upon some anecdotal evidence of runoff, some groundwater runoff that goes into Commerce Drive. We don't believe as an applicant that that has been satisfactorily diagnosed at this time, and the Conservation Commission approved an order of conditions on November first that basically said with respect to this issue, that the applicant will work with the town to address whatever the cause of any kind of groundwater runoff may be. But we haven't had enough of an indication of where it's coming off, how significant it is. We don't want to just go out and put a seven hundred foot pipe in and then find out that there was a better solution. So respectfully, we would submit that what we'd like to do is what the Conservation Commission condition said, which is basically work with the town to diagnose what the problem is and work with the town to solve if there is that kind of runoff, groundwater runoff onto Commerce. So that addresses condition twenty-one.
Oh, that condition, just, could you identify where the pipe would be?
Carlos, do you want to come up here and talk about it?
Oh, you're talking, just identify, you know, just show where they propose. Get the microphone, whoa, 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 get the microphone.
Carlos Sculte with Civil and Environmental Consultants, for the record. From what we understand, there's just a general comment that there's groundwater running into Commerce Drive. We don't know exactly where it is coming from. It's just been noted by the Department of Public Works, but our assumption is that it would be placed along the frontage of the property. Because we're already introducing new stormwater improvements and we're going to have subsurface chambers along the frontage here, some of the work that we're doing may address the situation on its own, but we understand that there is an issue. So we're more than happy to work with the Department of Public Works to understand their specific concern and address that in a way that satisfies them.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could staff respond at each condition? So today, in the rush of getting to the meeting tonight, I reached out to town engineer. I didn't get any response back. Kelly was out. She's the conservation agent. I couldn't respond to her. We never received the correspondence, attorney Marinelli, about the groundwater issue, so the only correspondence in the file is this memorandum of October fifth.
From?
The stormwater division.
Right. And?
I think there may have been discussion at the conservation meeting and maybe ahead prior to that, but I didn't receive anything that says?
From Stormwater Division?
Right.
Okay. Understood. And nobody is saying that, you know, anything other than what you're saying, Christine, is that, and I didn't even appreciate until you just said it, that apparently the planning department didn't receive what the Concom received.
Right.
So it's understandable that Christine would have written twenty-one the way that it's written. And I think that, you know, this is an evolving situation that we're all addressing right now because with the time crunch, we have figured out what happened. Planning, finding this out now, did not get the memo. Concom did. Concom addressed it, and what they said in their order of conditions that was approved on November one is work with the applicant. The applicant will work with the town. We would, we'd be more than happy to have that in condition number twenty-one.
I'm confident between the order of conditions and these conditions, if something comes up. He also has to get a curb cut from the highway department for any work to be done, so the highway department has some issue, they'll, they can address it at the curb cut. I would say that if that did happen, that we would be notified so that we can, because it may make a difference on the other end, the as-built drainage design. But I received nothing from the highway, DPW, or town engineer.
So maybe we're okay with what Concom said and just incorporating that in place of condition twenty-one?
That's an issue.
I don't think twenty-one as written is an issue.
I'm sorry, I missed?
My comment was that as condition twenty-one is written, which is based on the October fifth memo?
Right.
Is?
Yeah, but the October fifth memo is something we wanted to address with the stormwater division as to the need for doing the full seven hundred feet.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, rather than saying you will install according to the memo of October five, we wanted to have a further discussion with stormwater as to whether a seven hundred foot pipe is really necessary.
Christine, do we have a copy of the memo, the October? Yes, it's in there, it should be. I'm sorry. It's in there and it should be under October fifth.
I would, I would think it might be as simple as saying that the applicant will work with the DPW to address?
It should be a couple of pages before the Loma that was signed at the last meeting, October ninth. It has no letterhead because they haven't.
To address the matter of alleged groundwater runoff.
So October ninth?
I think, I think the main point is what Carlos said as a project engineer, that we're doing so much in the stormwater management and in the curbing and so forth that it may be resolved, and we just want to test that and also work with the stormwater division rather than just install a seven hundred foot pipe.
I didn't, I didn't. Sorry.
Okay, so we missed, discussed?
Why don't we come back to this one? Why don't we come back to this one and go with the next edition?
Okay. So Carlos is presenting that twenty-one may be acceptable because the, and we were discussing it outside, but given the, given the timing of all of this, it was misinterpreted that the runoff was incorporated into the October five memo. It may have just come about as a result of the last condition.
Yeah.
So it's the final, it's the final condition that we would ask be worded the same as the Concom. That we'll just work with the town.
That's, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with that. I just didn't have access to that condition.
Okay.
So I can rework twenty-one with attorney Marinelli.
So the next one was thirty-two. It's going to take some time to install all of the stormwater management and site drainage, and basically thirty-two says that we can't even apply for a building permit until we do that. We think that all of the stormwater requirements and the assurance that it's going to be installed is covered in thirty-one. And respectfully, we'd like to remove thirty-two because we do want to be proceeding with construction drawings on a pretty straightforward building. The board knows that we do have complex projects come in that have multi-story buildings and so forth. This is a one-story, pretty much vanilla construction. We would like to go in and have the construction drawings and proceed with trying to get the building permit. And the stormwater installation completed is going to be something that may not be done, probably will not be done before the time that you go for a building permit.
Mr. Chairman, if I may comment on that one. This is something that we've instituted recently because of the situations that we've had where the building has gone up and then it becomes an issue with the site improvements getting done. I understand what attorney Marinelli is trying to accomplish for his client, but I would say to you that thirty-two says prior to the issuance of any building permit, and thirty-one says prior to the start of any construction. So they're basically saying the same thing in a sense. Thirty-two doesn't prohibit the applicant from putting the building plans in, but if the concern is that you want to be able to put the slab in and go vertical before you do the stormwater, staff has an issue with that.
Okay. So issuance of building permit in thirty-two is different than starting construction in thirty-one. So they are different. And we're okay with thirty-one. It's just that, you know, again, it's a use by right. You know, it's, it's not something where you see this level of conditioning necessarily. We're trying to work with the board, but, you know, a use by right is approved with or without reasonable conditions. I mean, it could just be an approval without conditions. We don't do that in Braintree. We have many conditions, but this one is really prohibitive in terms of trying to get a building permit.
I guess I'm not following you because it's prior to the issuance of the building permit?
Prior to the issuance of bidding, prior to the issuance of any building permit from Department of Inspection Service, the applicant shall have completed the installation of site drainage system, with the exception of any building connections, and obtained approval under condition, what, thirty-one of this decision?
But I guess I would say to you, under thirty-one, if you were to take your suggestion of deleting thirty-two, you may get your building permit, but you still can't do any construction.
Well, there's a lot that goes into getting a building permit, as you know. I mean, it requires a sign-off of every department, every?
Let me just, let me just jump in on this. So you, under thirty-two, you can't even apply for the building permit?
Right.
Under thirty-one, you can apply?
Excuse me? No. It says prior to the issuance, not application.
Okay. But under thirty-one, you can actually get the building permit, but you can't start work until it's done.
Right.
Correct.
Right. So isn't thirty-two inconsistent? I mean, why do we need thirty-two?
I'm trying to, I mean, the bottom line is, under thirty-one, you can, you can have the permit in hand, but you can't build until?
Covers everything.
Yeah. So you can do, you can do all the work to get the permit?
There's two things that go on with the building department these days.
Yeah.
If this was a foundation, usually a foundation permit's issued. This is slab, correct? There'll be one building permit issued for the slab, although we have conditions in here that ask for a certified plan for the offsets of?
But they can't even start doing the slab with the building permit. If they get the building permit and they want to lay down the slab, you need a building permit to lay down the slab, you can't lay down the slab till you get this done.
Right. In thirty-one?
Yeah.
We can't apply, the building permit cannot be issued until everything's been done.
But it can be applied for, all the plumbing and electrical can be applied for. I guess I'm agreeable to possible compromise here. Our concern is that your building will go up and the drainage will be like the last component done on the site.
But it can't go up because you can't start the building until you?
Can't start the building under thirty-one.
You can't start the building. You can get the permit, but as soon as you put, you know, shovel to the ground or nail to the board or whatever, you know you're violated thirty-one.
This is nothing against your applicant. Please don't take it this way, but situations have been, in other projects, permits have been issued and the work starts, no matter what these conditions say. And because of that, we've had to go to a different way to approach this, and that's why we ask for the site improvements to be done. Now, given that the season being what it is and they want to do it, perhaps a compromise is some type of bond put up on the stormwater to be done. I don't know if your clients are agreeable to that.
I'm really lost as far as the issue and whatever the precedent may be with other applicants. I mean, basically now we have to put up a bond to get, to bond the stormwater syst- All I'm saying is that the conditions already cover the required installation of stormwater, and of course we're going to do it. Of course we're going to do it.
I mean?
As I preface, nothing against?
Yeah, but we have a Conservation Commission order of conditions on November one that's substantial. The order of conditions which relates to this is already in place.
And I think, I think one of the issues that arises, and I can understand what Ms. Stickney says, and not related to you at all, is we have conditions like this. Mr. Marinelli, I know you, you've been here before the board, and I know you do everything you're supposed to, but we have, there were other applicants that, that the enforcement of the R conditions isn't, isn't done. Say, people give the building companies a permit and says, okay, you know, go ahead and do it, and the communication between the department saying, you get your permit, but they still have to do this first, isn't enforced. I know that's not going to happen here. I don't want to beat up on a company that hasn't shown that to happen at all. I, I don't want to beat up on a, on a company that, that hasn't shown that to happen at all. So, I understand Ms. Christine Dickney's concern. It's the fact that other people, and this is not reflective of this company at all, reflective of Mr. Marinelli's past work here at all. Other companies kind of say, "Okay, great. We get the permit. The hell with them and let's get it done." And that's one thing, that's a fair. I know, and I'm comfortable, and my, this is only me, I'm comfortable saying that, again, I don't know the company and I, again, with all due respect to the company, Mr. Marinelli said it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. As far as, I'm not being judgmental, but I don't know you guys. But I know there's a track record of Mr. Marinelli. That's our concern. Our concern is this. The department puts a lot of work into things and people just go ahead and say, "Okay, fine. We get the permit." I know you're not going to do that. So.
And I'm sorry to hear that there's that kind of inter, interdepartmental distrust, apparently. For lack of a better word, it really is.
I agree with you. It's distrust, it's distrust, non-communication. Everybody has their own little.
And that's unfortunate to hear.
And that just really, it, it doesn't benefit this town. It doesn't benefit the projects going forward. And you shouldn't carry that burden. You shouldn't carry that burden. That's our burden. But honestly, it's happened. And I, and I know it won't happen with you because I know you, you've always been a person of word. Your clients are, do what they're supposed to. I, I have no problem on this one, eliminating 32. That's just my opinion. But you have to understand where we're coming from. It has nothing to do with the MAR. It has nothing to do with you. It has to do with the history of these departments not working together.
I'm sorry to hear that. I mean, because it adds another layer. And it's to, to an applicant that gets this, and I understand why, at 4:30, we all understand that, you know, vacations and holidays and so forth. But when you look at it at first blush and then you get into it, the way this discussion has gone, it really does end up being redundant, in a sense, to just ensure that because there's a distrust of enforcement of conditions that are, that are well-prepared and are, you know, well-intended and should be adhered to. And, and we, we certainly intend to adhere to them, that you get another condition that says you can't even get a building permit until it's done. Until the stormwater is done, which can be complicated. And we're certainly going to be doing it under 31. So, I mean.
I think as Christine was saying too, it's, it's just the issuance. You can still apply, get everything in line. And then, once it's done, you go right in, you get your building permit that day. So, I think it's just the issuance is really the only thing. I, I'm on, I'm kind of in between where I understand that it's, it's the, almost, it's saying the same thing, just two different ways. But at the same rate, if there's past things that happen, nothing against you or your client, it's just, it's just the issuance. You can apply, get everything in line, and then.
It is a shame whether we have to do this.
It is. And I guess, in light of everything, I guess this is how we've had to do it. I think Attorney Marinelli has represented enough applicants in the town that I feel confident we could let 32 go and we, and we will work with you on it. As long as you understand the intent of what we.
Yes.
And the concern, again, it's important that.
And I think Dan Mar was.
The concern is not with you. There's been no indication. But unfortunately, the planning department does a lot of work to get these conditions. And then what happens, we have some people that say, "Okay, we got the conditions, the permit. Let's get built. We'll come back and deal with the planning board later after we do it all." I know you won't do that. I know you won't do that, but it's happened. So, unfortunately, it's sad that we have to put these conditions in.
So, it helps, it helps us, Mr. Chairman, to know that dynamic and to know what the concern of staff is. And I, and I, I, I hear what is trying to be accomplished. But also, from our perspective as, as counsel on these projects and knowing the case law on projects, the case law on uses by right is that.
You, you got this one.
They, they, yeah, no, no, I'm just talking about the rest of them too. That, that the case law is that a, a, a use by right is allowed with or without reasonable conditions. So, all I'm saying is here we are addressing 63 conditions and working in good faith to accept 63 conditions. There are other, other lawyers would say, "There shouldn't be this kind of."
But that's why there's trust in you because you want to do this. Well, that's an understanding of our situation.
So, that's 32 and thank you on that.
The next one?
The next one is 50, 50, 56. I, I think Christine, just on a point that we had emailed back and forth, says three handicap spaces. There were two shown on the plans. I think we're okay on that, right?
Um, the, I went back and looked at the CMR and it says that you need three for, what was it? Do you have 42 or 45?
Yeah, condition 53.
I mean, I think you have plenty of room to put the addition. I just looked at the ADA CMR, so.
Yeah, and per the ADA regulations and the MAB regulations, any between 26 and 50 parking spaces on site, you only need two ADA accessible spaces. I'd be happy to look at the reference with you to confirm.
Whatever the CMR says.
Okay, we'll meet the regulations for the number of accessible spaces. We just didn't want to add extra spaces right by the entrance that wouldn't otherwise be required.
What did the CMR says?
Maybe I missed that, but did you say it was 56?
53.
Oh, 53. Okay. All right. We'll get that straight though.
Yeah, 53. On 56, 56 says, "There shall be no proposal approval by the successors and by the applicant to sublease portions of the contractor's building and storage yard." That happens all the time in MAR warehousing and storage. And we cannot be coming back here every time that we have somebody that says, "The HVAC is in on that job you're doing. We need to leave it here." And often, something is charged for that component to, to be stored. So, you know, I think that there should be a carve-out that basically says, "Except as relates to or as incidental to MAR's business operations." Because that happens all the time in, in the jobs that they, they have.
I may be wrong. I, I think it was meant to.
It's a long-term.
Third parties that.
Yeah, it's a long-term, some lease to someone else.
Lease to the Christmas tree shop or something like that. But I, I think we do need to have it clear in the condition that it, it's not affecting anything that relates to the business.
I have no prob, I mean, we can award that.
And then, 57. I know that we did talk the last time about the fact that sometimes due to a job location, we will have equipment leaving at 5:00 in the morning, which helps in terms of peak hour and not interfacing with peak hour traffic and so forth. We wanted to make sure that the normal business hours were 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. We do have times where equipment needs to go out earlier because of an emergency. For example, in 2015, with all of the snow that was on roofs and was collapsing, we, we, the MAR companies had equipment that had to leave at times earlier than are specified. We don't want to treat business, normal business operation as necessary as something where we have to come back to the board for a modification. We respectfully ask that normal business hours be 5:00 a.m. to 5:00, 5:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. And also include such earlier departures and later returns as are necessary due to the business demand.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to comment on that. The only concern, if the equipment is started and they move along, that's one thing. If the equipment is left for a half an hour idling in the lot or in the yard,
No.
that's unfair to the residential neighborhood in Weymouth. And I just, if we could somehow clarify the language that no idling in the yard, that they're just going their way.
Their intent is to have everything on a job, ready to go.
Just no unreasonable idling, you know.
Yeah, no unreasonable.
We have a little beef there with that other place on, uh, you know, that, that other, the old, with the bus use, the bus.
County, yes.
Yeah, before that, there was another construction company.
Correct.
That idle, that did idle for hours. You know, that's, that's just wouldn't be reasonable. There's no reasonable idling. You know, I imagine you have to start it to get it warmed up and stuff.
Does it no idling?
Include hours of operation or can we just make the condition be the idling?
I'm sorry, could.
Oh, I was just curious if we had to include hours of operation in the conditions or if we could just make no of no idling on site?
That would be better.
We could, that could be done. I mean, it is a site plan review and the only special permit being tied in is the traffic, which I've recommended you take no jurisdiction on. Yeah, the idling may be the answer, just no idling.
A lot of it is just reasonable.
We would be satisfied with the substitution of no idling to any hours designated at all. That's, that's fine. That's a good suggestion that we would, would find acceptable.
No, I, just no idle.
No idle.
But to a certain extent, you have to, you have to, you know, no unreasonable.
Maybe no long-term idling in.
Yeah, no, no unreasonable idle.
And we have the environmental performance standards in Article 11, which relate to that too. It's already in the bylaw. And that's it.
I'm going to open it to the, the board.
So, can, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear on condition 21. Is it going to stay as is or? We said we'd go back to it, so I didn't feel like.
Al, are you okay with condition 21? That was an engineering.
I thought, I thought you said.
So, condition 21 relates to the initial comments that we got from the Department of Public Works that we responded to. To the best of our knowledge, there were no further comments from them and they were satisfied with our responses. I think the one that we do want to either strike from the record or modify was the second additional comment that was provided by email following the initial comments that you received in the document.
I'm sorry, I've lost you.
So, there was two conditions provided via email later this afternoon, following these.
The Order of Conditions. I didn't give them numbers. They're just the double Xs after 23.
Correct.
After 23 has Conservation Order of Conditions. And then the one that says, um, the applicant's engineer shall depict on the site plan the proposed drainage improvement. You're asking for that one to be eliminated?
Correct, because that one was already incorporated into the Conservation Commission Order.
Yep. I mean, I understand the situation. I couldn't find any answer and I put more in than we need to.
So, what's the proposal with 21?
Keep 21 and then remove, and keep 21 and have the decision incorporating the ConCom Order of Conditions, which would be after 23. And then striking the.
The next one.
Specific one, yeah. That makes sense.
That's, that's all right.
But just to be clear to the board, the, what's not here is the boiler plates too.
Those, Suzy?
The boiler plates, the boiler plates, 1 through 16, those are we doing with each one. I don't know if there'll be surety required by the town engineer. I've asked that question. I haven't gotten an answer yet.
Will that be up to the town engineer?
Well, we usually plug it in before we file it with the town clerk, so hopefully he'll give me an answer back.
Any problems with that?
Pardon me?
Any problems with that or?
No, the normal surety set by town engineer is part of the boiler plate for working in a public way.
All right.
So, then we're, we're, I think we're left with deleting 32 and revising 50.
Yes.
56 to carve out the exception for anything related to MAR business operations can store on, on the property. And 57 goes to simply, I, you know, no idling. Now, would, with those changes, that would be acceptable to the applicant?
Let me just bring it up to the board now. I'm going to make any exciting questions you may ask now. Any, any questions, comments? Madam Kam, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Christine, to be clear, what, what bonds are going to be required? Just the town engineer one?
Yes.
That's the only one? Okay. So, nothing on drainage or?
No.
Like that? Okay. And Mr. Marinelli, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the last meeting or whenever we had the last meeting, your applicant was planning to purchase this property from Messina Companies?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Has, has that happened or is that in?
No.
Happening or?
We appreciate the board's cooperation tonight because we have very close time constraints on when that property must be purchased. We really, really have to get through the process and then have the appeal period, of course, run. So, we are, we are up against time constraints. It's so the purch, to answer your question, the purchase has not happened. It's due to happen in early 2019. If the board approves tonight and the appeal period runs, it might be accelerated. It'd be up to the applicant.
Okay, so it's somewhat contingent on?
It's completely contingent on, on having.
Completely contingent.
The board's approval.
Okay.
Yes, permit, there is a permit contingency in the purchase and sale agreement.
Okay. And also at the last meeting, we talked about the fact that, you know, traffic would be a key item. Have there been any discussions about, you know, when vehicles will be leaving this facility and when they'll be returning, since we just had a discussion about, you know, hours of operation? So, when are the, when is the equipment going to typically leave? And when is it typically going to come back?
I, I can have, I think Dave Mar presented at the last meeting, I'm sorry, Dave Hughes, who's the Vice President of Real Estate, presented the brochure that you had the last time that shows the time that various employees get in from, you know, early morning, some of the office personnel later in the morning. I think the preference is to get on the road as early as possible. So, so, you know, we would be trying to get on the road, you know, if it's maybe some, depending on the location of the job and so forth, that's all calibrated based upon where they're going. But earlier is better.
Okay, so we talked about 5, so we're looking at 5, we're looking at 6, 7?
5 to 6.
5 to 6. And then, how about on the return? What time? If you could just, if you're going to say something. Oh, sorry.
Dave, on the returns?
Cars. Those are cars, though. Just, sorry, sorry. I just want to be reminded of it.
Yeah, yeah. David Hughes, Vice President of Equipment and Property for the MAR Companies. You can see our revised request for the, the hours of operation. In our Boston facility, we run roughly in that 6 o'clock range to 3:30. Some may come back earlier. Some may not come back at all because they'll stay on a job site. But now, if we're an hour removed from the city and the job happens to be in the city, we'll be starting, you know, in that 5 o'clock range, you know, to get to the city. And then, they'll be coming back. Again, every job is different. You know, some jobs only take one pick and you're back at noon time. So, it, it really is a, a very variable timeline for the return.
Okay. And I, I believe, I mentioned last time, and I'm just going to emphasize it again. You know, we, we can't hamper traffic in those multiple corridors where you're going to be both for our sanity, Weymouth, everybody, as you know, school buses, so on and so forth. So, I'm just taking this opportunity to reiterate that, which I'm sure you know and I'm sure you hear from everybody. But now that you're looking at Braintree, we have to pound, pound at it as well.
Understandable.
Yeah, okay. And so, a question for, for Ms. Dickney. Do we have enough protection under, let's see, number 50, 55 then on the traffic? That if we were to have any issues, we can get that fixed, Christine? Is that, I assume 55 is the traffic one?
Yeah, so that relates back to Article 14, our traffic. And so, the board, in the cover memo that I gave you, I have a recommendation that based on what they provided to date at this time period, they're not subject to the full traffic study. That's not to say that something may happen in the future, that we have concerns that they can, we'll discuss with them again and maybe they'd have to do it. But they, at this point, their operation is not.
Yeah, okay. So, so this gives us sufficient protection?
Yep.
You know? Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Downey?
Do I have any questions?
Madam, Madam Joyce?
No further questions.
I have no questions. I have no questions. So, nobody else? Any statements? Nobody in the public? So what I'm going to ask is, the board, a motion to accept our correspondence?
So moved.
Is it a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next motion, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Don't move them.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, a motion to move to find an article for Section 135, 1404. The applicants, through the submitted materials and traffic presentation, do not generate 50 or more new vehicle trips during the peak hours of the development, and are therefore not required to provide a traffic study for the proposed project at 201 Commerce Drive.
Motion be made, is it a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the file number 1712, Special Permit and Site Plan Review, Logan Communications, the applicant, subject to the conditions as discussed at this meeting and the revisions thereof, is moved.
Okay. So a motion to be made to approve the conditions as written and as outlined in our discussion today. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and we really appreciate, under these time constraints, the work that the staff did and the board tonight to enable us to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and effort too. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next matter on the agenda is Wood Road. I believe they want to continue this.
Yes, I do.
Prior to them continuing, I don't know, the board read that anonymous ad they put in the paper.
I did not.
Did anyone read that?
Can we vote tonight?
We have it available.
Well, I will tell you, just so you know, that I did send a, an email to the app, to whoever wrote that, just so you have it. And just so the board, for the record, it says, "My name is Bob Hernandez, I'm the chairman of the planning board. The planning board, which is the PGA, has always allowed people to address the board. Instead of writing anonymous ads, please attend a hearing and get involved in the discussion. Things are better addressed in front of a curtain, not behind it. Please identify the employee that sits on the planning board." Thank you. They did indicate that we had a planning board member that was an employee, which is not true. They, which, I'd say it out loud, and so they probably listened, and that it's a lie, and that we always entertain conversations. So I did fire that off to them. They did respond, and I responded back, but I look around, and I guarantee the person that paid that ad won't show up here. So, but that's about it, so.
Can we take a vote tonight?
No, no, no. So, well, I'll take a motion to continue that. Is the next hearing date?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. What else on the agenda?
We have minutes to...
Approval of meeting minutes of June 12, September 18, October 9, an executive session on October 9, 2019. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, quiz on what was said in those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Want to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.